Good evening, everyone. This is the time and place set for the regular February meeting of the Royal Oak Planning Commission. I will call the meeting to order, and we'll start down on this end. And if the commissioners can introduce themselves, we'll go across the panel.
Ann Beeky.
Charlotte Douglas, City Commissioner.
Tim Twain, Director of Community Development.
Aaron Leal, City Attorney.
Mike Fornay, Mayor.
Jim Ellison.
Woody Gantina.
And I'm Gary Casada, the Chairperson. All right. First order of business is the approval of the minutes for January 10th, 2023. Have the commissioners had a chance to look these over? Are there comments, questions, or a motion regarding the minutes for last month's meeting?
Mr. Chair, I have all approval.
I'll second.
All right. Motion approved. Second by Mr. Gantina. Any discussion? All right. We'll call for a voice vote. All in favor of approving the minutes for last month, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing done. Motion passes. All right. Next item is the public comment on non-agenda items. If there are members of the public in the audience who would like to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda, now is the time to come forward. You'll have three minutes, and we'll hear you out. All right. Seeing no hands or indication, I'm going to close the public comment on non-agenda items, and we'll move to a presentation by Attorney Leal.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Commissioners, I wanted to take a brief moment after the public comment to introduce you to our office, City Attorney's Office newest Assistant City Attorney, Nick Rochausky. Nick joined us last month. He has over 21 years of experience in municipal and prosecution, municipal law and prosecution as well. Primary is primary duties as prosecutor, but he will also be replacing me on this planning commission. So I'm not going anywhere.
Drew Short's drawing, Nick.
As you all know, when Markless retired, I jumped into to fill this role because it is a vital role, and I've had a lot of fun here with all of you in providing you legal advice and also laughing at the jokes that have been slung around mostly by the man two of my left.
Yeah.
But it's wonderful. But Nick, Nick has, as I mentioned, he's had a lot of experience in this area, not just in municipal law, but also in this area of land use law. He's been Assistant City Attorney for communities of Birmingham, Orchard Lake, Village of Lake Orion, Bloomfield Village, and Madison Heights. So he's probably faced a lot of various issues with all these communities, and our office in the city is very blessed to have somebody of Nick's caliber join the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nick if he wants to say anything.
Thank you, Aaron. Well, I'd first like to say thank you. It's a privilege and honor to join the Royal Oak team. It's been a wonderful team so far. I've only been here a month and a half or so, but I'm extremely excited to have made the transition here and look forward to helping you navigate any of the legal issues that may befall the planning commission. You know, my 22-plus years in municipal law, I've handled a lot of planning zoning issues over the years for the different municipalities and helped them navigate various issues over the years. And quite frankly, over those years, I grew an affinity for planning and zoning legal issues and laws. So I really look forward to joining you as a member and providing you legal advice and guidance on any legal issues that may come up. And really happy to be here and look forward to joining you up there in a month or two when we make that transition.
Welcome.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Quick question. Question for you?
Well, actually, it'd probably be for. Isn't Nick going to be leading us through the master plan program?
Yes, he will.
Okay.
I'll also be there as well.
Oh, geez, okay.
And I have had experience with going through the master plan review and amendment process, although, you know, you generally rely heavily on your hired advisor for that, your contract for that. But I have been involved with several of those projects over the years, so familiar with it.
It's always good to have steady, consistent legal guidance through that.
All right. Very good. Other comments or questions for the new counselor? All right. Hearing done. Thank you.
Are you prepared to buy the first night for your first meeting?
I'm sorry?
Are you prepared to buy after the meeting for our first?
If that's part of the initiation, by all means. Hop camp's open now, right? So we gotta.
All right. Next order of business is, new business, is the public hearing on capital improvement programs. I assume, Tim, you're going to introduce us here. Yes?
Well, I'll give a brief introduction. The city's Finance Director is here, Deborah.
Oh, okay.
She, her office put it together, so I'll let her introduce herself and kind of give you a brief introduction to the capital improvements program, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Lichtenberg, and I joined the city as Finance Director last June. So this is my first time through a CIP process here in Royal Oak, but it is not my first rodeo with the CIP. One of the things that I focused on with this year's CIP is really adding a little more context to the information that's provided. So CIP is the Capital Improvement Plan, and it really functions as a multi-year planning tool. And it is designed to link together the planning that takes place with this body and the budget process and the way that the infrastructure projects are financed. So this year's CIP includes about $147 million of requests that, if fully funded, would take place over the next six years. That is an aggressive number. So not every item on this list might happen within the next six years. However, by including them on the list, it has it on our radar, and it allows us to plan accordingly for the needs that will be coming. The amount of requests for the next fiscal year are just over $33 million. And just for a little bit of context of this process, every city that has a master plan is required to have an annual capital improvement plan document and produce that. This is the way to ensure that the infrastructure of the community is being maintained, preserved, and protected so that those assets and investments are there for the future. The projects that are included in this year's plan have been submitted by the city's departments and compiled by the team in finance. The CIP is a planning tool that is used and guided by the city's master plan. And it's also a tool to implement some of the other goals and objectives that we have in various documents that the city has produced, including the strategic plan, the S cap, aging in place, and other documents. So we're really looking at it as more of an integration of all of those pieces of work that the city has done. In this process, the role of the planning commission and all of you tonight is really to affirm that the projects that are presented to you provide a reasonable interpretation of the upcoming needs of the community and that they comply with the master plan. The things you are not doing tonight is actually approving these as final projects or providing the funding. That piece of it comes with the adoption of the operating budget by the city commission later in the process. But what you are doing by recommending this plan tonight is allowing these projects to move forward in the budget process and to be considered for funding. So a few things that are new in the document this year, like I mentioned, we really are looking for more context. What is this all about? What do each of the categories mean? We've added pages 1 through 18 of the document, which are really more in-depth descriptions of the process, the project categories, and the funding sources that may be available. On page nine, and Tim, if you are able to scroll to one more, this is a new concept and part of the, what I mentioned about really integrating the various pieces of information that we have. This graph represents how the projects that are presented align with the goals in the strategic plan document. As we would expect, the majority is part of the reliable infrastructure goal, but we do have other projects that help fulfill some of the other goals laid out in that plan. We've also added some charts and graphs because not everybody likes to read a bunch of words. Sometimes the picture does tell the story much better. And there's a table of contents for easy navigation. The document that you have has links and bookmarks, so it's much easier to navigate the document itself. With that said, you have the document, and if there are any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. But again, what we are looking for this evening is the planning commission to affirm that these projects do align with your vision for the city's future, and then we will be able to take this to the next level of the budget process.
Mr. Ellison.
Thank you, Deborah. It's good. I like it. I've looked at enough of these to know that this is a good one. Easy to read, easy to understand. But I do have a specific question that involves the federal appropriations we've got for the animal shelter. Is that money secured? Do we have that money yet, or is it waiting for us to start the project? Or where is it? I'm just concerned that if we wait too long, it's going to disappear.
Right. So there are certain things with every budget. It's a fluid document, and we don't stop progress just because of fiscal year, we're waiting for a fiscal year to begin or end. So that part of the process is already in place. If that were to come to fruition before the end of the fiscal year and before this plan is implemented, we would act accordingly, and we would not let any federal funding slip through just because of timing on fiscal years.
Let me see if I understand. So we've got that money that was appropriated, and in the past, if the money's not spent by a certain amount of time, the money's taken away. Have we secured that, or are we in a position to make sure we don't lose that money, whether it's by starting a project earlier or some kind of safeguards in there that guarantees that money? Because by the time we start making a draw on the money, we're into another session of Congress.
That piece of it is outside of my office. I don't know if Aaron or Tim have any further information on where that stands.
I'm Chair. I know Deputy City Manager Todd Fenton is involved in that and is keeping track, so I'm aware of that because I am assisting him with outside counsel with the actual real estate transaction for that particular facility that we're looking at. And I can tell you what we're at in that process is we've received the appraisals for the animal shelter as well as the other building with the potential other party that's willing to work with us.
Yeah, no, I'm aware of it. I know the process is going forward. Again, I've seen it in the past where federal money is taken away, and I just want to make sure that we're on top of that and we're making sure it doesn't suddenly go away overnight because someone didn't do something. So I'm glad you guys are on top of it. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Lichtenberg, I want to tell you, I like Slide 9 a lot, or Page 9, maybe I should say. It's more of a report. Just a quick question. I see like environmental leadership, 5.4 million, roughly 3%. I mean, a bulk of what we're doing here is infrastructure, the reliable infrastructure. And I imagine it would be too much of an exercise to do it, but with some of that reliable infrastructure, the way we're doing that infrastructure, I mean, could that, you know, be, could that pie sliced a little bit differently if we kind of looked at, you know, the elements that were, you know, maybe part of that reliable infrastructure is just doing it more environmentally better?
So what I would say about this particular graph is that this is low-hanging fruit.
Got it.
So this is the primary alignment. And at the bottom of the page, we even noted that the goals of vibrant local community and long-term fiscal health are not represented specifically on the graph as a primary goal that any of the projects are looking to achieve. However, I think we can all agree that having reliable infrastructure and building a welcoming and engaging community are also going to enhance the local economy and long-term fiscal health. So this only looks at the primary strategic goal. Absolutely, some of these would cross over multiple categories.
So we're saying, hey, look, yeah, solar panel, you know what I mean? Okay, that's something that would be environmental, but maybe a road that's designed with bio swales or something like that would just be called reliable infrastructure, but it does cross over.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. I just don't want people to say, oh, you're only contributing 3% of, no, no, it's primary. So we talked to it. It's the primary thing, but within all of these, there's different shades that, you know, overlap into different categories if you're to have a secondary and tertiary look.
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
And one thing that I will point out, this data is driven by the information that is on Pages 19 through 23, which you're used to seeing, the layout of all the programs. But the second column, or the third column, I suppose, is the strategic goal alignment. So that shows you what we've said the primary goal is for each of the projects.
Yep. Other questions for Ms. Lichtenberg?
I have specific comments, but I guess I think we should have, after the public hearing, not have comments.
Okay, very good. I'll take that suggestion. All right. This is a public hearing, so if there are members of the public who would like to come forward and address the commission and about this issue, about the capital improvement program, please raise your hand or come forward, and you'll be recognized. All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the side table, ask the same question. Any more questions for our Finance Director? Ms. Beeky.
I don't know if they're questions. They might be more like specific comments. On Page 2 and on Page 1, there's a list of reports that the capital improvement plan relates to, and I think it would be good to add onto that list the Royal Oak Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, and perhaps the Suncog Bicycle and Mobility Plan for Southeast Michigan. And I can send these to you after, you know, by computer. The Royal Oak Green Infrastructure Study from 2018, and the 2014 Woodward Avenue Complete Streets Master Plan. And I think those additions are important in following on what the mayor was just commenting. As I read through this in great detail, my biggest concern is seeing things like streets and roads planned for spending millions of dollars in repeavement, and there's no indication that the walkability, the safety for people biking and such are indicated in the general summary or in the actual description. And it had said in the forms that the city staff fill out as they make their request to pick one of the categories. And similar to what the mayor was just saying, I think maybe picking a secondary category would help emphasize the importance of, we don't want to just repave the streets the same way they are. We need more permeability. We need street design that impacts how people drive, so we know street design influences speed more than anything. And I would say that for anything related to streets or sidewalks, we have the safe, healthy, and just city would really be a secondary consideration that I would like to kind of permeate the way the city is doing business on those kind of issues. Because so far, I haven't seen a lot of that, and also because our RFPs are not easily accessible, it's hard to know. But for some of the paving, both for sidewalks and for roads, for example, the contract states, which was in the agenda last night with the city commission, simply cutting out tree roots when they're in the way, but nothing about whether or not we're preserving the trees when our urban forestry is actually one of our strategic goals. So a better, bringing together of the internal practices that respond to these outside goals because I think for our residents, that's kind of what they're expecting. So that's a general comment, especially on the pavement, trees. And then I have some specifics that basically permeates any of the ones on roads. There's only one, I think, that mentioned green infrastructure and only one that mentioned traffic calming. And I would say that basically, any of the main streets that we have, cars drive not at 25 or 35, but they just drive at 50 or better. And so that's just something to address all the way through as the contracts move through the process. And then the other one, I would just make a general comment, is same thing, materials. Again, not about the general intention with the parks and such, but the non-toxic type materials in our parks. And again, that's more of a contract and a RFP issue, but I would hate for us to be spending money and then contaminating the ground on an ongoing basis when we could be doing, making other different choices. I don't know. I have very specific little notes on lots of them, but I can send those because they don't change the intention of the document. It's rather more of looking towards the contracting. So if that's appropriate, I don't necessarily have to read through all of them.
No, I would appreciate that. One other thing that I did not mention is this is a bit of an intermediary step. We are currently in the process of implementing a new software through Open Gov, which will in future years add even more color to this document. It will allow for us to capture things like the secondary goals and really be able to flesh this out. So I appreciate your feedback, and definitely I would like to have you send that to me so that we can incorporate that.
Maybe if I may, can I say just two more specific ones? On the Highway Safety Improvement Program Pedestrian Counter Flasher Heads, this has been ongoing for quite a while, and I'm concerned, again, from a walkability perspective, that we're actually making things less safe for people who are walking. And so I remain concerned about that. And on the CAP 2337 regarding paving a gravel road, I'm not sure if that passed yesterday or not, but I think the standard of the 22 feet and the 27 feet is a replacement for things that are environmentally more supportive now, perhaps is something that needs to be reformed within the day-to-day practices. Because we're spending a lot of money to plant trees, spending money to cut down trees and trim them, and then we're at the same time digging up and damaging them with the roads. And so I think there's some kind of broader perspective on the urban forestry that needs to be looked at as a kind of a, something that crosses the different departments because it's a lot of money being spent, and then we're losing trees at the same time that we're planting them. Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions, comments, discussion? I have a question for Mr. Twain, probably, and that is that we had some comments there, but Ms. Beeky said they don't change the substance. I think that's what you said.
I mean, if it were appropriate to make those modifications, I would like to have them made. Again, because we get this so late in the process with the public hearing, I'm not sure if it's appropriate. I mean, at least listing those reports, I mean, I have something like the sidewalk and pathways, we should have crossings as one of the headers because that's an important thing. So I would like those minor changes to be made. If it were possible to do more, it would be nice, but I'm not sure in the process where we are.
Well, what I see, what I see here is that we have an opportunity to say we're going to make a resolution with these changes. We also don't have to do it today if it takes time to make those changes. So I'm going to pivot to Mr. Twain and ask, what is the, what do you think the proper procedure here is if we wanted to entertain a motion by Ms. Beeky to add some things?
Well, I think you've kind of covered it. If you want to accept the capital improvements program in its current format with no revisions, you have a resolution suggested in the staff memo. If you would like to amend that, you should articulate in what fashion and add those items to it as part of your recommendation. And then the Finance Director can forward that on as part of the document to the City Commission, and the City Commission can decide whether to include them, change it, do whatever. So yes, you can make that modification.
So here's a question.
In terms of timing, I don't know how much time the Finance Department has in terms of passing this on to bring it back later.
Yeah. One of the things in the staff write-up is that we could postpone this, the resolution until next month. So my question for the Director is, is there anything detrimental about postponing this in order to have a round of revisions?
I guess before I answer that, I would ask Ms. Beeky, are any of your changes, the addition or subtraction of any of the actual projects themselves?
I mean, I'm the only one I would really, I mean, to me, should be subtracted is the paving of the one Fairgrove Street would do the damage to the trees. That would be my suggestion. The rest of them are more suggestions for moving either this time or moving forward that would give more guidance towards, again, keeping these environmental issues and things in mind as these projects move forward. And again, so that's where I don't know with you, with the Assistant City Manager, what's the most effective way? To me, as a person who's not working in a city, like I would just send it to you, and you would look at it, and we could discuss, but for the formality of this process, I mean, the main ones that I would suggest are making sure those reports are added in there and some of the headers.
So what I would say is if it is modifications to the verbiage that is explaining the process, those would just be administrative adjustments that we would make before we get to the final product, the end product that would be incorporated into the city's budget. If there are changes that you would like to see to the projects themselves or the descriptions of any of the projects, then we would probably want to come back and finalize it in March.
I mean, again, I don't think I can make a unilateral recommendation to take out a project, but as far as project descriptions go, again, the kinds of things I'm looking at is rather than just saying, again, Lemon Mount Road restructuring, but how is it going to be safer for people who walk and bike? What is the modification? That if there's a desire to improve it in that sense, I would prefer to see that in here. I think there's been great strides in how the documents presented relative to previous years. I've been doing, this is my fourth time through this process. Maybe some of these is more appropriate to apply into the future. I don't want to, you know, hold up the process. I'm only going to have his comments.
Well, I think what I heard from the Finance Director here is that if there's projects that you want to make a motion to take in or out, then that's something we can look at, and that would be substantive. But the other things, I think what the Director is saying is, hey, that's administrative. If I like it, I can put it in, but it's the projects that we're looking at.
And the other suggestion that I might make, and I'll defer to Mr. Leal and to Mr. Twain on this, you could in your resolution include the planning commission would like to encourage departments to include sustainability measures whenever possible in producing RFPs for these projects or something to that effect.
All right. Appreciate that. So given that what the Director just said, I think it's incumbent upon us to decide how to move forward here, either to make a motion for a resolution as presented, resolution as modified, or a motion to postpone. But we have to take some, one of those three actions, I think.
I guess I'm wondering if anyone else has any other comments or?
Are there any other comments?
You waiting for a motion?
Somebody's got to make a motion or further discussion.
I don't want to make all the motions. Okay, I'll make a motion. I move that we accept the resolution that is submitted on the first page of our report with the addition of encouraging staff to use environmental-friendly methods where are practical and um, methods where are practical and, uh, and, what's the wording?
Also responsible.
Yeah, responsible and practical. Uh, wherever responsible and practical. Does that, does that do it?
Well, I, I'm going to ask for clarification. You are procuring projects. So that's why you said in the RFP process, correct? Because you're not designing it.
Right. Finance department does not design projects. However, in the procurement policy, so, um, through that amendment to the resolution, my interpretation is that you are directing or emphasizing to the city departments the importance that the planning commission places on, um, environmental sustainability.
That, that is the intent of my motion.
And that will be, um, incorporated as these plans are built. Um, the thing to keep in mind is many of these projects are several years out. This is a six-year planning horizon, and that emphasis of, um, from the planning commission will be then, uh,
Push forward.
Rolled into.
Push forward with the process, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Well.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. And just to make sure I understand the motion, the motion is that, uh, by Mr. Ellison is that the planning commission would approve the capital improvement program for, uh, 23, 24, physical year as presented, and with the encouragement, uh, that the department should, uh, advance environmentally friendly, um, methods in their procurement process, and we recommend the adoption by the city commission. Does that sound right?
It covers it, yeah.
Okay. And we have a second. Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Douglas.
I do think, um, Commissioner Beiki's recommendation that those, um, outside reports, um, be referenced in the text, but as, as Ms. Lichtenberg said, she can do that, and, and perhaps when you bring it to the city commission, make sure you point out that those have been added, but that can be handled administratively.
It looks like we have agreement from the finance director because she was nodding her head.
I'm happy to do that.
You have to, you have to answer verbally.
[laughing]
Okay. This is like a deposition.
Yeah, I just want to add, just for the confidence, I mean, um, you know, clearly the city for years now, um, has embarked on a journey in a couple of different areas to do things better and to do things with excellence and to do things with a nod towards our, not just a nod towards our values, but really embrace our values as a community. And environmental sustainability has been on the forefront, sometimes early on, project by project, and now with the S cap and really with the help of, um, um, you know, volunteers in the community and with staff's commitment to making sure that everything that we do, that we are following our, um, values and that we're following the prescriptions that the city commission has put on staff, uh, these would be many different types of, um, resolutions we put in place. And I'll even say, you know, even like responsible contracting, we put in ordinance in place. So there are some things that, um, technically all projects are going to have to consider. Uh, we even have developers coming in with looking at our community benefits, um, resolution so they know what to do when they bring things to the table. But with this capital improvements, I'm confident that staff understands the message, but I think it's important to have that extra emphasis as well from the planning commission, that it's not just coming from the commission, but that it's, you know, it's okay to come to us and say this project costs 10% more because we had to do this. We had to put more permeable pavement in. Good. I mean, not good, but okay, let's talk about it and make sure we're, we're doing the right, right thing. So I'm confident we're going to have, uh, I think this resolution is good to underscore it.
All right. Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Beiki?
I just wanted to make the further comment that again, when we talk about environmental sustainability, that that includes, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in this, this, the wording, but it in, of the, of this, um, but, but it includes things like the safety of walkability, the kind of street design, because the environment sustainability is not just about, again, it's the materials, but it's also about the ability to move through space safely, and it also corresponds to our aging in place, et cetera. Um, and I just really, with as much money as we spend on streets and roads, I really want to see that become something that we provide even better than we do now because we're known for it. Michigan deserves safe communities where kids can go to school on their bike, and right now we do not have that infrastructure. And as we put in pavement and such, we need protected spaces for people on biking and such as well. So just that includes all of those things.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Any other discussion? All right. That's a hand?
No, that's just.
I saw that.
It was a hand, but it wasn't a raised hand.
Okay, very good. Um, very well. Then I'm going to call for the vote, and so all in favor of the resolution by Mr. Ellison, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. The next order of business is a revised special land use and site plan, SP 17-03-08, uh, project at, uh, 30875 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twing, uh, please give us a, uh, preview.
Sure. This site is on the southwest corner of Woodward and Coolidge Highway. Um, it is a existing gas station with canopy, uh, pump islands, a convenience store, um, and, uh, restaurant facility. In 2017, the site plan was approved for, um, this facility as well as the special land use approval. Uh, the petitioner is here in front of you this evening for two reasons really. Uh, one is a modification of that 2017 site plan. They installed a 30-inch masonry wall around the drive aisle and between the sidewalk and the gas pumps and Woodward right away, Coolidge right away. And you will see in some of the pictures that, uh, one corner of that, uh, masonry wall, brick wall has been damaged. Uh, the petitioner is making a request to replace that wall, uh, in its entirety with an artificial landscape buffer, uh, that would basically run, uh, in the same general area. Um, you will see in the special land use report, uh, that, uh, staff's opinion is that, that, that artificial landscape buffer, uh, may not provide sufficient barrier between vehicles and the sidewalks, so we are less recommending against its installation, um, and that, uh, the wall be, uh, repaired and, uh, from its damage and that potentially, uh, bollards be installed at the end to keep, uh, others from running into the wall. Uh, the second reason that's in front of you this evening is related to some outdoor display and sales area. Um, again, going back to the 2017, uh, special land use site plan approval, there were no outside, uh, displays or sales areas included, um, and I believe there was even a contingency that none would be included. Uh, they are asking that you modify the special land use approval to allow those, uh, outside areas and to approve a site plan, uh, that it also includes, uh, those outside display and, uh, merchandise areas. So those are the two items that are in front of you this evening in regards to, uh, this particular site. Uh, if you have questions on that, I'd be happy to address them.
Are there questions for Mr. Twing? All right. Seeing none, we'll call the petitioner up. Please, uh, bring your folks up, introduce yourself and explain why you are entitled to the relief you're seeking.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. My name is Dennis Cowan, uh, with the firm Plunkett Cooney, uh, representing LML Real Estate Company, which is the owner of the Shell gas station, which is the subject batter of tonight. Uh, with me tonight is Ken Lucia, who is one of the owners and operators, and they not only operate the Shell station at the corner of Coolidge and Woodward, but also the larger one, uh, a little bit north on the east side of Woodward, and Ken's involved as an owner and operator of both. And also our architect, Jeff Klett of Krieger Klett is also here. Uh, Leif Kasab, who is another owner and who I work with very closely on this, uh, was unable to attend tonight, uh, because of a family emergency that arose, uh, late this afternoon. Um, and I wish he was here because he has a lot of background and spends a lot of time at this particular station. Uh, I do want to first note and, uh, congratulate, uh, Mr. Leal on escaping the planning commission. No, I'm only kidding. Um, I do know, you know, he was basically, uh, being an attorney and, uh, knowing what, what municipal attorneys go through, and, uh, you kind of got thrown into the fire in the last year and a half with a whole bunch of issues that have been cases of first impression in the city of Royal Oak, not the least of which was the marijuana, uh, review and issuance and things of that nature. And I think you've done a very good job, so I, we'll, we'll miss you, but I know that your replacement sounds equally capable, so, uh, we look forward to, uh, to his presence here. Uh, I also want to note that, uh, I'm in a lot of trouble tonight. It's Valentine's Day. I am at a municipal meeting. My wife's birthday is Thursday. I'll be at another municipal meeting, so I hope we can keep this brief, and I will do my part because I have a count, a, a proposal that I hope will, uh, uh, meet with your, uh, your favor. So in 2017, as has been mentioned, we achieved, uh, special land use and site plan approval, also received some, uh, a variance from the ZBA, and, uh, the owners invested 3.4 million dollars to demolish the existing and tired and old, uh, station and put up a, a much more modern, uh, station, um, with all the modern conveniences that people expect in a service station. And I do note that as part of the site plan change that occurred, that, that site went from four curb cuts to two, and I'll come back to that because I think that plays into this maneuverability and safety issue that we have at the site. Uh, and as has been noted, we do have a problem and we're here to solve that problem. This, we're here primarily because of customer safety. That wall on Woodward, this is the fifth time it's been knocked down. So you kind of think, yeah, one time, it's an accident. Two, you know, another accident. Three, Houston, we have a problem. So we're seeking to resolve the problem, and that's why we are here, because we need your assistance in that regard. And not only are people hitting the wall, but if you have had the opportunity to go to the station and look on the interior wall, it has been repeatedly scraped by cars. And even today, when I went out there, the end cap on the Coolidge side had been hit. It hasn't fallen off, but somebody's definitely hit it. So, uh, it is, uh, unfortunately a tight site, uh, like we have many in Royal Oak, um, and we're trying to do the best we can. So we looked at all the solutions with Krieger Klett. They do a lot of, you know, creative things here in the city of Royal Oak, and the first thing we looked at is can we do live plantings? The problem with that, it, that would be the preference, but the problem is it requires, and we worked with Mr. Murphy on this a little bit, uh, the planning staff, it, it would require at least a minimum of three feet for the plantings because you have to have the irrigation and all that and the curves, and that makes the maneuverability on the inside even worse. So that, that just, we, we were looking at bringing that forward, but that's just not an option, a viable option. So what we have presented is a plan to remove the entire wall and replace it with artificial bushes. And I even bought a piece for show and tell, um, that we got from Planetaria, uh, which is a local company here in West Bloomfield, uh, which doesn't produce it, but does distribute it. It has, uh, about a five-year shelf life. Our client is willing to undertake that significant cost of, uh, boxing them, so to speak, um, putting them up, um, securing them, but also paying because they have about a five-year, five to six-year shelf life realistically. In the north, probably a little bit longer than the five. If you were in a, in a, a sun, we're kind of sun starved this year, I think, with the winter, but in many places that have year-round sun, they probably wouldn't last, um, that long. So it's not a question of cost avoidance. We're trying to solve the problem. However, what I would like to present for your consideration, uh, as we have went through this process and especially even since we filed and talking to a number of different people, how can we resolve this? We think we've come up with this, a very simple solution. And that is we would do a partial removal of the masonry wall. On the Woodward side, we'd remove 20 feet of the wall. It's currently 68 feet to the angle point, and that would be reduced to 48. And on the Coolidge side, while we haven't had that wall knocked down, there's been some near misses, and we have this issue with the scraping of the, of the interior of the wall. We're asking for a reduction of 15 feet, which would reduce it from 34 to 19 feet. Still keep the angle. I believe altogether we'd still keep 84 feet of buffer, so to speak, or masonry wall. We would also enhance, uh, the landscaping that we have. We have some, not a lot of space, but space that can be more enhanced, and we're more than willing to do that. The removal, we believe, is justified because this has become a safety issue, and we just can't ignore it. Can't stick our head, head in the sand. So I think we have to keep in mind, big picture, this is a screening wall. It's mostly a decorative wall. It's not a health and safety type issue, uh, that you have with some things that are necessary on a site plan. Uh, and when a wall becomes a problem, um, rather than try to preserve it, we think the simple solution is to remove it. Uh, we appreciate the suggestion about bollards. I think we're taking on unnecessarily the city and the owner liability. This has been knocked down five times. I don't think a bollard's going to stop anybody, and what really concerns me is I saw at a local ga, like local car wash, they now have separators that, they're plastic, but they look exactly like a bollard, and we're concerned somebody's going to think this is a breakaway. It's not there to be, uh, you know, a, a stanchion, so to speak. And from what we understand from the five people who they've assisted after there's been an accident and a wall knocked over, nobody's been seriously injured, but we're concerned if somebody hits that bollard, somebody's going to be injured. They're going to hit their head on, on either the windshield, or they're going to be jostled around and somebody's going to get hurt. So we would prefer not to have to install a bollard, and we don't think that's necessary. At the end of the day, that, we don't see that as a, a viable solution. All we're looking for by removing a partial removal of the wall is a little bit more breathing room so that when people come into the station, they don't have this immediate right and then an immediate left, and they're trying to negotiate not only the, um, the pumps and the bollards there, which we believe those bollards should stay there and will, and the wall. You're just looking for a little bit more maneuverability when people pull in. That's all. And that leads me back to the point that I made. Most of us in Royal Oak go to gas stations that have four curb cuts. The ones I go to all the time at Crooks and, um, if I'm not going to the ones on Woodward, generally hit the ones at, at Crooks and 13 Mile, and both of those stations have four curb cuts. I understand why curb cuts are cut down particularly on Woodward, but the net result is a decrease in maneuverability. If you go to your local gas station, a lot of times you can just literally pull it and slide right into the gas pump. That is not possible here. You have to make two 45-degree turns to get into the pump, no matter which way you're coming from. So all we're asking for again is just a minor change with the reduction of 20 and 15 feet. Uh, we're also asking, uh, for the outdoor sales, uh, so we can be in compliance, and the staff, uh, as is stated in the letter, is not opposed to that at all. Um, that's what every other gas station, and quite frankly, even the, the, uh, drugstores on, on Woodward are able to do in order to be competitive. So we thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this request, and I hope I have proposed something that, um, is acceptable.
All right. Are there questions for the petition, Mr. Gantino?
Um, so the dimensions that you just mentioned on the, uh, the partial removal of the walls, I think it was 20 feet on the one side, 15, can you help me understand how you came up with those dimensions in terms of the amount that you want to remove versus a narrower dimension to facilitate the ingress and egress? That part I understand, and I'm just wondering why you're proposing to remove so much of the wall on either side or where that dimension came from?
Yeah. Well, again, we're keeping a substantial portion of the wall. That has really been done, and Mr. Kasab in particular has driven a number of different cars through that, you know, through the, um, gas station, and this is based, I, I can't say it's based on scientific engineering because we can't do a test where we remove it, which is there, but, uh, based on watching people and the way they come into the store also, it appears that if we remove those two, you know, portions of wall, that it would just give people a little bit more room to maneuver as they come in, and they're not worried about both the wall being there and the bollards and the pumps. So they have three things to worry about when they pull in. So that's really, um, the basis for doing it. And plus, I will add- And plus, I will add that where that wall got knocked down, that damaged area is already 10 feet. We measured that today, so I could tell you that. So that's already 10 feet. So we do believe we need a little bit more room than that. If it's 15 feet and 10, that's fine, but we, to get, to resolve the problem once and for all, so we don't have to come back to you again, we just felt 20 and 15 was justified in asking for that.
Commissioner Douglas.
My question is along the same lines. I'm looking at a Google Street View of the place along Woodward, and I'm trying to visualize how far back, that is, how far to the north is 20 feet.
Okay. If you're looking at the picture, I can tell you exactly where it is because we went out and measured it today. It would be slightly past the second set of pumps. So when you pull in, there's a, there's a set of pumps, and then there's a second set of pumps. So it would be just about at that point where those pumps are, that would be where the 20 feet would be. So you basically have the first set of pumps people could actually slide into. That would actually be a blessing. That would be, you know, to be able to do that. And actually, and also into that second set of pumps, they could kind of move in a sliding fashion instead of having to make a right turn and a left. So we think that would resolve, be a big part of resolving the problem. But it basically comes, we went out and measured it today, Mr. Kasab and I, and he stood and was lined up with that second, that second set of pumps.
Yeah, I think, I think you can look at this plan too, and I believe, and the architect can tell me for sure, but I believe these sidewalk grids are five feet.
Those are, I think they're four foot, the four-foot flags there for some reason are a little bit small. So they're five, I think they're five. It's four or five, but the one we measured was four.
So, so yeah, it would end up, because there's what, four pump islands?
Yeah, there's four pump islands, right.
It would end up past this second one in here.
Very good question. That's why we went out today and measured it, so we would have an answer to that.
Yeah, and I, I'm seeing the logic of what you're saying, but I'm also aware that you've described the fact that vehicles have scraped the inside of that wall, and if vehicles are scraping the inside of the wall and there's no wall, they're coming close to pedestrians on the sidewalks. Now, I do understand that the bus shelter is being moved, has been moved?
The bus shelter has been moved. The bus shelter was moved last week.
And you're taking a victory lap on that, right? And you're taking a victory lap on that.
Well, I give credit to all the people involved, including County Commissioner Dave Woodward. So, yeah, it was a, quite a, it was a year and a half ordeal to get the request to be heard and for the smart to grant the move, move down the street to where it had been at the Basha building, yes.
So, so yes, we've eliminated a lot of pedestrian activity in front of here. So there's, that mitigates my concerns about that pedestrian protection. So I'm still kind of like this on that.
Right.
That's all.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't, I didn't know who was first.
In all offense of people, sorry, not sorry. I think that these masonry screens are just, I mean, it's the, I just think, they look great on day one, and then afterwards, they're constantly patched everywhere. Like my neighborhood, I got gas stations. It looks like a word I can't say, but they're just out there piecing them together, Mitch Masgrout, constantly getting crashed into. I hate the idea. I always wanted to go with a natural screening where we can. In this particular case, we're seeing deja vu, like we have at least 500,000 times in this city where these things get knocked and poked and, you know, people, yeah, they damage their cars. I understand there's a, there's a purpose to it. If you look to our neighbors to the north, they don't have these screening, you know, masonry screen walls at their gas stations and convenience centers, and I don't hear people screaming and crying up there. And actually, it looks nicer to have a more landscape look. Here, we're tight on space. I agree, there could be a little bit of a pedestrian issue there in a rare case if someone decides to blow through their proposal. You know, I'm sure a masonry wall would probably stop them if they wanted to go over the sidewalk, but I think we had other issues on our hands with folks if they're doing that. And I think that it, you know, gives people a little bit more comfort pulling in and a little bit more of a, I mean, the last thing we want to do is create, you know, issues where police have to respond and people have to, you know, pull over and create more congestion. I think it's a good plan, but I know sometimes it's unpopular to say away with masonry screen walls.
So, I'm sorry, Mayor, are you proposing they remove the whole thing or just the 20 feet that they're, just they've offered?
No, I think, I think they could remove the feet on either edge, like in the entrances. I think that's perfectly fine. And I think it's a better look to replace it with the hedges, the artificial hedges.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Gantino is next.
So with, with the partial removal of the wall, would you be proposing to maintain a curb still? Because I do still have the same pedestrian interaction concern in the sense that, you know, looking at what's, what's damaged now, if you just remove 10 feet of it, for example, I do see how it would be better for the vehicles to get in, the issue with the cars scraping on the inside. It's, the more of the wall that you remove, the higher the possibility of an interaction with any pedestrian at the sidewalk. If there's a curb there still, you're sort of relieving the wall from being there, contacting the vehicle, but you're also providing a little more protection for the pedestrian potentially. So just curious if there was curbing planned to go in place of where you're removing the wall?
First of all, that is an excellent suggestion, and it's an oversight on my part. Yes, there's actually, there's footings in there for the wall, so we can easily construct a curb, Jeff.
Please introduce yourself to the record, please.
Oh, sorry, Jeff Klatt, Krieger Klatt Architects, 2120 East 11 Mile. A good point Mr. Cowan brought up, there's at least a 42-inch deep foundation below that wall right now to support the existing construction. So it could easily support a new curb in that area. That would be less acceptable to damage if a vehicle rolls over it.
Mr. Ellison.
Me? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a couple of concerns with this when I first saw this plan, and then I've talked to Mr. Cowan about it. I think he understands, and it's part of the reason I think we've come back with this alternate plan. I know that the walls get up there, sometimes they're passed off as decorative and to make it look better. I think in this particular instance, that angled wall at that corner serves a very strong safety purpose, and that is to prevent a vehicle, if there is an accident at that Woodward and Coolidge, if you've got a southbound Woodward and a westbound Coolidge, and someone pops through the intersection and smacks that car, it's going to go right up that corner and into those gas pumps. And if we take that wall out, there's nothing to stop that. We had a very similar circumstance last year with the mobile station at 13 Mile and Woodward, where an accident happened at the intersection, and as a result, the inertia of the car, it put it over the edge of the gas station and into the gas station, and that was my concern. With the solution of just taking off the 15-foot on one side, you know, the 20-foot on the other side, I'm fine with that because that's not where these vehicles are going to end up. But I have two questions about the landscaping you're putting in. Are you going to anchor these into the foundation so that they're not just flopping in the breeze? I mean, they're going to have a strong anchor so there's some stability in them?
Yes, they definitely will be. It's a steel frame that they're built on, so they're designed for exterior use.
Okay, so it will be anchored so it's not going to be pushed over because?
Yeah, that existing foundation is down there, already have frost steps, so they'll be anchored right to that.
Okay, then, and second question is, what is going to be on the existing brick wall? Are you going to cover that with the, with the faux material here or just the remaining of the brick wall?
With the existing wall, will, they can reconfigure it so it's consistent with the, you get brick in there, what's the other, the?
Brick and a stone cap. So we can, we can wrap the brick around the side so it's consistent on all sides.
So it's still going to have, you're still going to have the, the brick and the stone cap where the existing wall is that you leave, and where you cut off is where you're going to put this material in, and that's going to be anchored?
No, we weren't going to put any of this material.
Oh, you're not going to anything in there?
Just the curb, just to put, when the open, what we're removing, we'll put the curb in.
Why are you showing this fancy piece of stuff?
I brought this because I, Mr. Kasab went through great length to get this, and this was part of the original proposal, but we'll get rid of it. So, there we go.
There goes my whole argument. I thought it was good with nice. Okay.
By the way, the one thing about the safety issue, so when I was out there today, I did, I do want to note, yes, the wall will stay in place to prevent any cars from, you know, unduly coming in in case of an accident, but they're also going to have to navigate our sign in front, the wall-mounted sign, and, and the electrical lamp and the, and the fire hydrant.
Yeah, anything that, out there that's going to stop a car from crossing into the gas pumps is what I'm concerned about.
Absolutely.
And at this particular intersection, it is a high accident intersection. It's a very dangerous intersection. They've had to redo it a couple of times to make it work properly. But I just, in my mind, I had this vision of somebody speeding southbound on Woodward, somebody crossing, and they're going to get popped on the side, and it's going to push it right through this, this wall.
Right.
And if you've got, you know, someone in there gassing up, it's going to be a problem. So I think the, the fact that the wall's going to stay there and the added interference of the sign and the other stuff is, is going to help, so. But as far as, if you're going to take 20-foot and 15-foot down and just replace with a curb, I think it's, okay.
All right, Mr. Gantino, don't go away.
Well, I actually have a procedural question here in the sense that what was proposed and what's in our packet is not necessarily what was just verbally communicated to us here in the meeting. It sounds like there seems to be, at least through conversation, general acceptance to what's been verbally proposed. Procedurally, if we wanted to move forward with that, is it as simple as a motion that amends what has been proposed? Or are we able to even move forward on what they proposed this evening based on the fact that none of that information is included in what's been submitted already?
Well, let me, let's, let's have Mr. Twing answer that.
I would say that you, it's a simple enough modification to the plan. I would also say that staff's recommendation was that the wall remain. So you could support staff's recommendation, allowing them to remove a portion of it. And whether 20 feet is what you'd want or something less, you could do that too. You don't have to totally accept one way or another. So procedurally, to get into it though, your first action would be to deal with the special land use on the outdoor display and then move to the site plan approval.
Yeah, I was simply going to reinforce that because that's what, in the olden days when I was up here, a much younger man, that's what we used to do. We used to approve the site plan with modifications as discussed at the meeting with the planning department's understanding of what they wanted, and they would modify it and it would be done in the planning department without having to come back here. So I know we have done that before unless that's changed, I don't know.
All right, let's, Ms. Piki.
I just wanted to ask a question. I see, again, it's a lot of damage to that wall. How much would you say that the speed on Woodward is impacting the way the cars pull in? The relationship between the high speeds and the damage to the wall?
You know, I, I can't, it's, it's hard to say. These, these situations have been so odd and, you know, I won't go through every one of them. I mean, one of them though was somebody on their cell phone, you know, texting. So I will, you know, certainly with that, it's, it's hard to say what exactly is, if the speed contributes. It might because I think people, and especially when the bus stop was there, this, because this has happened twice with that bus stop there, and I don't know if any of you were there when the buses would stop and people were flying off of Coolidge, as Commissioner Ellison has pointed out, it, it got pretty dicey over there. We're surprised there weren't more accidents because people were trying to pull into one of the busiest McDonald's in Oakland County and get around the bus stop. The speed itself could, could be a contributing factor, but we can't say that, I can't say that to you scientifically.
So, so again, I just want to make the comment for the record is, I mean, just generally for us in Royal Oak, that as we look at these intersections and the speeds, et cetera, again, to my point about the, the street and road design, because it does impact businesses, it impacts safety generally, and again, the design itself has an impact on those situations. And the other thing I want to comment is I don't know what that material is, but in our attempts to do more environmental, I know you're not going to use it, but we always look for something that's more recyclable than I presume that is for future reference.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So this is a special land use request and a site plan, so I just want to be clear. As far as the special land use is concerned, we're talking about the outdoor displays, but what, then we're talking about the placement of the outdoor displays and the screening wall, that's site plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, just so the commission understands, our first task will be to address the special land use, which is a public hearing, which means that I have to call for a public hearing on this. So I'm going to do that. If you, just take a second. So are there members of the public who would like to speak on the issue of the special land use application for this project? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the side of the table, and, oh, Commissioner Douglas.
And I will move approval of the special land use to allow exterior displays.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ellison. All right, is there further discussion on the special land use is what we're dealing All right, seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of approving special land use application, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Special land use is approved.
Clear that out.
What's that?
I said, clear that out and?
Clear that out. Now we're going to talk about the site plan and, all right, are there further questions for the petitioner? Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to make a couple of comments if I may. So I have spent some time since this came up, this came up two months ago. So as I've been going around the city, I've been conscious of when these walls get knocked down, where they are, how they're located. The fact is, nobody likes these walls getting knocked down. I appreciate the mayor's comment there. Every time we ask for them, there's always the thought, oh, well, it's going to get knocked down. But if you, if you go around and look, you'll see that the damage is usually right next to the driveway. And if you look at this particular case, you'll see that it's consistent because the two wall, ends of the wall are not the same, in the same relationship to the driveway. The Woodward side, the wall is right at the edge of the driveway, and it got knocked down. On the Coolidge side, it is not on the, right at the edge of the driveway. It's back at least one sidewalk flag, which is about five feet, and it is not knocked down. And in my data collection, as primitive as it might be, just walking around the city or riding and looking at things, that's consistent with the information that I've seen, what I would expect. So I think it would be, to me, an acceptable solution to cut off the damaged area right where it is, in fact, and leave it like that. I don't even think there's a need to cut it off at the, on the Coolidge side, but if they want to cut it off, and they want to go through the expense of doing that and re-establishing it, that's okay with me too. I just want to make those comments. That's what I observed. I also want to be clear here, the screening is something that the planning commission can direct, so I don't think it's a problem that the actual plan is otherwise, yes?
Yes, it's your, your choice.
Okay, I would like to ask a question of the petitioner, particularly the architect. Can you describe, Mr. Klatt, what, be, be more specific about, just because you still have the plan here of the, of the greenery, or are you withdrawing that? I'd like to know about the structure. That's what I want to know. I mean, is it, is it like a iron rail in there with?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the exact makeup. I know it's a steel mesh, a steel frame that the product is wrapped around. We used it in some applications over at the Kinetic Creations Building, over at Fort the Knolls. It's up on the upper levels, but you can see that, that same product up on those upper balconies. We also used it in a child development center where they installed an interior placate for the children, and it kind of lined that perimeter, and it held up to the abuse of the children in there, and it worked well. I mean, it looks realistic, it functions well in design for that application, but I believe it's a steel frame, and the product is wrapped around it. But exactly how it's constructed, I'm not, not entirely sure.
Yeah, I'm sort of wondering how thick a steel frame is it? Is it like a hand railing, or is it like something I put in my garden to hold my, hold my tomatoes up?
Oh, I think it's more substantial than that. I don't know the gauge of the steel, but I know it's a substantial structure, and it's designed for that. We had a conversation with the Planetaria team, and they're confident that it would work well in this application.
Okay, and, and it, does it give to a vehicle backing into it?
I don't think it would hold up to that. I mean, I think it would stay mounted. It's going to be bolted to the foundation, but I'm sure it would be damaged at some point if a car hit it.
Okay, if a car pushed on it, is it something that's going to bend and stay in that position, or does it flex? That's why I'm asking the questions.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that data. I wish I could, could let you know. I've never tested it or didn't ask those questions to see what would happen if a car hit it, but I'm sure it would be damaged. I don't think it's that rigid or robust.
All right.
I'm sorry, are you asking about the green stuff?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, yes.
The framework for it.
I, I, yes, I'm, I'm having some thoughts that it's going to also get pushed by a car if it's there by the driveway, and then we'll have a bent hedge there. So, I mean, it won't be crumbled, but it still may be bent. So that's my concern.
It would get damaged, yeah. I'm sure it's in sections, and we'd have to remove it and reinstall a new piece.
Yeah. So, that would be a concern to me. Now it's sticking in the sidewalk where people walk and ride, you know. So anyways, I would, I think I, myself...
Sure. I can help you with, on the spec sheet that they provided, the galvanized steel frame is listed as five feet by one foot wide by three foot high. To help give you an idea of how substantial that steel frame itself is, that's what's listed on the spec sheet. So that plastic that they've shown, if you can imagine that draped over that dimension of a steel frame, is sort of what you can expect to see. But I would agree with you in that I don't think that's substantial enough of a frame to withstand a vehicle in any way, and get pushed, you can get pushed in any direction.
All right. Thank you. And I think, Mr. Ellison, had a second for a second.
I'm confused, because I thought we'd, I thought you just said you're not using that hedge stuff.
That's the current proposal, to remove that.
Mr. Ellison, I was asking a question out of curiosity. I was curious about this product.
You're confusing me. It's a whole brain.
I do prefer the wall to stay, myself. I just was curious about this product. I don't, I'm guessing this isn't the last time we're gonna see this.
Okay, that's all. I think it's cleared now.
All right, Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I, I don't know who suggested the idea of a curb that is cutting back the wall and replacing it with a curb. Who did that? Because I think that's a very elegant solution here. Yes, there will be drivers who are, you know, texting on their phone and will drive over it and will complain to the owners because there's that darn curb there, but tough block. So that would, I mean, if we're kind of thrashing this out, that's kind of the where I'm gonna go. And I may even make a motion to that effect, but I'm gonna wait and see what others have to say.
I saw a finger there. Mr. Gantina?
Well, I guess I'm to the point where I'm made it satisfied enough to make a motion. I guess I'm, we can maybe talk about how to properly make the motion. I'm okay with removing the wall section that's damaged, replacing it with a curb as the remedy. So based on the way that the staff report has indicated, I guess my motion is to allow them to keep the wall, but remove 10 feet of the west wall, remove the, was it 10 feet of the north wall?
We actually asked for, it would be 20 feet on the east wall and 15 feet on the north wall.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we need to remove so much on the, on the east wall there. So I'm just gonna make the motion. So my motion would be to approve the site plan based on the masonry wall staying with, and allowing the applicant to remove 10 feet of the north wall, 10 feet of the east wall, but maintaining a curb where the wall was removed.
All right, that's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Okay, is there further discussion here? Mr. Mayor?
I don't know if 10 feet does it. If we're gonna go 10, why don't we go 15? Only because we can see where the wall's actually been damaged, you know what I mean?
It's only 10 feet.
What's that?
Where it's been damaged is only 10 feet.
Well, the north wall hasn't damaged at all. That's, that's more of a maneuverability issue into that plane there. Is it gonna go here, or we're gonna go there?
This one I'm not as concerned about.
Well, that's the one.
Folks, make sure you're speaking into the mic there, so...
Well, we're having sidebar here.
Oh, you're not, you're not discussing with us?
I'm discussing with my party here. He's, he's my ears. I'm not hearing, so...
All right, well, I, I'm gonna make a comment that my...
Well, I guess, I'll just respond real quick. So the reason I'm reducing the, the amount of wall that's removed on the east side is just based on what's, what's there. You know, what's visibly damaged is roughly only 10 feet. In terms of vehicles maneuvering and sort of needing extra maneuvering room, based on where that driveway is, the 10 feet is fairly obvious in the sense that that's what's damaged. Any additional footage north of that, I'm not see, I don't see the benefit of that in the sense that if a vehicle needs that additional linear footage in making that right-hand turn or in exiting, at that point, they're coming clear across the sidewalk, and they're nowhere near the driveline. I just don't see why the additional footage is necessary based on where the wall is damaged, because it doesn't necessarily benefit anything, especially considering where the driveline itself actually is, is the reasoning behind why I'm cutting that back to just the 10-foot of damaged area.
All right. And I'm gonna, I'll respond to that by saying that that actually makes sense to me, because what is the screening wall for? It's for screening. And so the less screening there is, the less, the less it's doing what was intended, I think, by the, by the ordinance. Ms. Piki.
I'm listening to this discussion. I guess I'm inclined to support the proposal as stated. But the one thing I also want to state for thinking forward is, sightlines from cars are so different now because they're so tall. And so I'm wondering, again, maybe in this case, or maybe other cases, that there needs to be something almost like a pillar or a taller, something taller on the end of these kind of screening walls that would make them more visible to people in tall vehicles, because they can't see something three feet tall when it's, I forget the dimensions, but it's something like 10 feet. It's, it's far. And so I don't know if that's something that's to consider for overall regulations in the future.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
So, just to make sure, we're talking 10 on either side, right? But the one on the Woodward side, the petitioner thought, was it 20 feet? Or is it 15?
Yes.
20 feet would be preferred, and then it was 10 feet, or 15 feet on the Coolidge side, right?
The original request is 20 and 15.
Okay.
The motion is 10 and 10.
I just kind of feel like, I mean, I get the logic that Mr. Gantina has, but I just feel like, you know, we might be back again with more damaged walls. And that makes me feel like play it safe. But I think we're protecting by keeping the wall intact from the main intersection. I think we're, we've still got enough wall there to protect. But, yeah, I might make a, I want to hear what everyone else has to say, I guess.
Mr. Ellison?
In going back through the petitioner's original site plan where they were looking to take down the entire wall, what they show us going back in is the walls as configured, but eight foot shorter. They're looking to cut eight foot off each end on their original plan. So what we've got in front of us now is to cut 10 foot, the resolution that's in front of us is to cut 10 foot. And I'm not sure, I'm still not sure what we got out of the Coolidge side.
10, 10 foot.
So we're actually giving them two or feet each side to what they originally asked for under their original configuration.
I think you're correct.
Okay.
All right. There further discussion? All right, any more questions for the petitioner? All right, well, I'm gonna call for the vote. And I think we can call for voice, oh.
Yeah, I'll just add, I mean, I kind of see where this is going. I'm not gonna risk turning down like 10 feet, even though I think it should be more. So I could vote against it, saying that it should be 20 and 15, but I feel like I'd be a one-man island here. But I'll support the 10 and encourage the petitioner to come back to shave off another 10 if it continues to get crashed into, I guess.
All right, very good. I'm gonna call for the vote, then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing done, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take your push, Mr. Klett. All right, where are we? It's a Green Giants toupee.
Okay, next business, boards and commissions review discussion. We also have another guest for this, I take it? Yes, Susan Barkman is here. She's the assistant city manager, and this is her item, and so I'll direct it to her. Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here on Valentine's Day. I'll try to keep this part moving along so that that way you all can get home to your loved ones. So the boards and commissions review came from a city commission objective, and they wanted us, and they gave direction to staff to look at all of our boards and commissions for a variety of different reasons. And I always like to tell groups, this is something that cities probably should do every so often. It's a good chance to kind of look at what's actually happening and look at boards individually and see how things are going. So with this review, we are looking at all of the processes and procedures and things that happen that support our boards and commissions, everything from how we apply, which some of you may have just done, maybe for the first time, and maybe for quite a few times. We're looking at how we are training staff, how we share our appreciation, how we even help people as they exit their time working with us for boards and commissions, and looking at all those different processes in between. And then we're also looking at each board individually to kind of assess, is it meeting its original intent? How are things going? Do our boards have enough resources to do what they need to do? Do staff have the resources they need to do to support the activities of each board? And so as a part of that, we're attending all the different boards and commissions, or almost all of them. And so tonight, I'm here to ask you guys and have an opportunity for you to provide your feedback on how you think things are going, both on the process side and as a board. One of the unique things to you guys is you guys are, have a lot more state regulations that impact what you can do. And those are things that the commission can't really change as easily. You've got to go through a whole state process to do that. But you guys also are a little bit unique, because you have another board, the Brownfield Authority, which is embedded into your authority a little bit. So we want to really look at, kind of, that was a unique piece, I thought, you know, if you guys want, if you had feedback on how that's going, too, we can look at that as part of that. So I'll open it up to your guys' feedback and questions and provide any prompts if needed.
All right, are there, Mr. Ellison?
The planning commission is, the planning commission, Brownfield, we used to be the sign board, too. Not the sign, but we still are a sign board, so...
Sign board of appeal.
Yeah, okay. I just want to verify that.
Mr. Gantina?
So this has come up in discussion amongst our board several times. And I think training is something that we could look at for anyone that's on, especially a commission like the planning commission that is regulated by quite a bit of, you know, legislative rules that, quite frankly, we, I can, at least from my personal perspective, there wasn't a lot of training before my first day on the planning commission, saying, you know, giving me a guideline or guardrails of what can and can't be done, where we do have authority, don't have authority, even down to just little things of, you know, how we communicate with other commissioners on topics. It was a little bit of, you know, trial by fire, so to speak, which is, I don't think what we want. So if, you know, if there's a way to, even if it's a, a simple onboarding process for new commissioners, particularly for boards and commissions of this nature that have a little bit more regulation to them, I think that would be a good idea. Just, again, just to get people to understand, you know, we, we're encouraged to do our own training as they come up through the different folks that offer the training. That's where I have learned quite a bit in terms of how the role is supposed to be conducted. At the same time, I think it would have been, it would be great if the city has, you know, maybe it's a one-hour onboarding for an individual that's a new commissioner, or something along those lines. So I'll leave it at that.
Not the first time we heard some requests for onboarding, so I think you'll see something in April.
All right, Commissioner Douglas?
So we do, we cannot require planning commissioners to go through any sort of training. But we do encourage them to do so. We do encourage every planning commission member to participate in, what's the rule, Tim? At least one session per...
Term.
Per term. And the mayor, because the mayor makes appointments to this committee, may take that into consideration. If there are planning commissioners who have participated in extensive training versus those who have not, then that may affect his decision-making process. So, and we can't script that or mandate that, but at least we have that, we've thought that through. And I think everybody has done something, gone to a conference, done online training. So I think we, we've kept up with that. But that's, so that's lurking out there as well. We, there are different ways that planning commissions can be configured according to state law. There are different structures. We happen to have a structure which includes the mayor and one city commissioners. Do we want to reevaluate that? I don't, I don't think so, but that could be an open question as well. I mean, I think that having two people from the city commission here, knowing that some things will wind up before us, helps us inform the city commission when they do come before us. And the, the knowledge of some of the things that city commissioners make that planning commissioners don't works well going back down to the city commission. So I, I mean, I do find that to be a good structure.
All right. I would say I agree with that. And I, and I think, too, what might be interesting is I know sometimes at the end of the meetings we have, let me go to the, back to the agenda. You know, we have these like annual reports and training sessions and all, like the non-action items, and we kind of blow through it. Maybe if we always targeted, you know, just literally not a whole robust conversation, but five minutes at the end of every meeting, if there's a particular topic that makes sense, like, hey, we're gonna talk about Open Meetings Act this month, and then next month, we're gonna talk about, you know, if there's a legal topic that we want to just have general, you know, information on, it doesn't hurt to kind of have a micro-training for, you know, just awareness. You don't go over it, not just say, read it on your own, but spend five minutes, literally no more than five minutes, because at the end of a meeting, we don't want to spend a ton of time. But just to kind of avoid and, you know, keep our minds a little sharp. I don't know what that curriculum would be, but I'm sure Tim and Aaron and Nick now could figure all that out, so.
All right, other comments? Commissioner Douglas, again?
I do suspect that part of your overview is going to, and we've done this before, is to offer Open Meetings Act training and parliamentary procedure training to all boards and commissions. Yes. So I, I didn't think I needed to, to recommend that, but I, but...
Yes, a part of what I will be looking at is operationalizing that a little bit, so it happens more automatically on a regular basis. It's a little more budgeted for. But I think you will see something around Open Meetings, FOIA, and, or the Freedom of Information Act, and Roberts rules in April.
Ms. Piki.
Good comments, and I appreciate the reflections there. I guess, again, I've been a few years now, and, and one observation would be, we seem to have a little bit more, the name planning is in the name, but most of our stuff is reactive, and it doesn't feel like we're actually planning something. It's like more reacting to something brought to us. And so I have observed, I think in Birmingham, they have like two mini workshops or sessions a year, or in others communities I've been in, that maybe, again, some kind of mutual training, and again, don't want to add a lot of time, but maybe there's some points at which we have an opportunity to talk among ourselves, or just to have something about where we see the plans going. And maybe that relates to the current strategy, some of the other boards and committees, all these other plans we know exist, how do they affect us, and how should we be keeping them in mind?
When you say other plans, are you talking about like the strategic plan, what aging in places?
Correct, we're correct. Because we want to make sure we have those in mind when we think about how we respond to what we see here, rather than it just being an isolated issue. It should relate to those other issues, maybe. And then, I don't know, this is, this is more like maybe participatory collaboration as far as the planning thing. But in other places, I've seen, either with neighborhood associations or some other places where you, you work with, with the parts of the city and what they'd like to see in their, their area proactively, rather than just waiting until it comes here and it's kind of a last-minute thing as far as what they might want. Like in Vancouver, British Columbia, in neighborhoods, they'll say, oh, we have three neighborhood businesses that are empty. What do you, our citizens, think you would like to see here? And so there's kind of a collaborative effort with getting that information ahead of time, rather than it being like somebody comes in from the commercial side, oh, I want to plop this here. And then people come and they're upset because it's, you know, next to their house or whatever. So I don't know how that fits into the assessment you're doing. And then, oh, one other observation in other places that I've been, is we do have the, and maybe in Michigan, it's different. Like you said, the city commissioner and the mayor is standard, and then some other places, like in Boulder, I've seen, where it also says, because this is planning, they might want one architect and one person that has certain experience. Not to, not to dictate everyone, but to kind of look for some specialist. Again, that would be a change in how it's organized now. It's just an observation I've seen, that sometimes people want to have a specific mix on specific commissions or boards.
Other comments? Okay, seeing that, I will, I will go. So I think I was appointed by Jim Ellison back in 2014 or '15, I actually don't remember right now, and he came back. So it's interesting. I want to say that Mr. Gantina's comments, I really endorse that. I think it would be good. I also think that FOIA and Open Meetings Act, that's, that is... is a factor, but planning commission has specific, unique requirements that can be very opaque even when you read the statute several times. And I think that would be something that we might be interested in pursuing something for us. But I would also say, you know, first of all, I forgot that there was some requirement that you have to go to training. I like to go to the training. I've been to the MAP Conference. I just sat through eight hours of MAP housing on the video, very dense, but it's not the same as having an interaction with somebody in a more intimate setting about our particular issues. And I think that's more what I would be interested in participating in. Something of, you know, planning commission, specific, you know, training, especially if somebody new comes on the board who's not, hasn't done it before. And I just want to say, in response to Ms. Beiki, we, we had an architect here who, who is now gone and I think we miss him, but I don't, I, I wouldn't necessarily endorse a specific types of people. What I, what I, what I've seen here, since I've been here, whatever it is, eight years, we've got a terrific panel. And who's ever doing the appointings, who's ever advising the mayor has done a pretty good job. And, and I, and I think, I think the panel has gotten better all the time. And, and I'm sorry, we, we lost a couple of people I thought were really good. I'm confident we're gonna have more good people. But I think the makeup of the panel is really good. And I don't know how much staff has to do with that, but one of the things that was in our little write-up here is what about resources? Are you being supported? I think we're being supported great. I think that the staff does a great job. The whole crew is available to us when we want their help. I love the write-ups. I, I've said this before, and not, this isn't just for his ego. I, I go in front of other planning commissions in other cities and our write-ups are the best. Okay, that they just don't, some of these other cities are just, you scratch your head what they're giving you. Ours are really good. Now, having said that, I would also say, we're in for, I think, a challenge. I think there's a lot of activity coming up with the master plan. I haven't been through it before. Some people on this panel may have been. It's gonna be a lot of activity and I, I'm confident that we're gonna have the support we need.
Okay, good.
Okay, anyone else?
So anything on the application process that you, as you were kind of going through it, that you were like, this was weird, this happened?
You mean on planning commission members, applications to be members of the board?
Yeah, so some of the feedback that we got is, is that like members have, you apply for a board and commission and you never really hear anything for a really long time and then all of a sudden you get this letter that's like you've been appointed.
So what happens is, is at least for my appointments, what I do is, one, we have one application for every board and you're allowed to pick everything that you want. So we'll get, when I see a stack of planning applications, I'll get, you know, 50 people in there because like 10 of them have applied to every board. You know, they're a new real estate agent or attorney in town and they want to get involved and that's great, but it's like, okay, I don't know what you're really interested in. And then, you know, there are some key indicators in there that are important. You know, if you've lived here three months, I'm less likely to put you on planning than someone that's up to your 30 years or more. And, and then, you know, sometimes we get good occupations in there like architect, construction, something that, you know, can help diversify the board with that experience and mindset that really promotes great decisions. But it might be interesting from a planning point of view just to have maybe a little different application. I don't know, for zoning and planning boards that have a little bit more, you know, and I think of it for two reasons. One, it kind of weeds out the people maybe that are clicking a box and those that are generally interested in this type of work. And two, we can ask for other things in there that are more germane, like have you sat on a board before? Have you been in front of one? Do you have any sort of training? Do you, are you resistant to going to train? Like, I don't know, maybe there's a different way we can, can hone in on that because I do have to do a lot of sorting and that's why it takes a lot, I know we're, we're down a member again this month, but like Mr. Casada said, we get them good. When we get them, we get them good. So, you know, let's be patient. And I do make sure that when I narrow it down to two or three, I make sure to call them all. And so typically for library board appointments and for planning commission appointments, I'll call and talk to the folks and then ultimately pick one based on that conversation. And, you know, I know it's, doesn't have to be that way, but that's, now other boards, maybe the appointments committee, you know, picks them and then they get a letter to the historical commissioner or something and that's just the nature of how that activity has to go. But for these ones that I'm in charge of, I want to talk to people first.
All right, other, thank you, other comments?
That, that just made me think of something again with regard to transparency because maybe, I don't know if it's there because I don't think it is, but on the website, maybe there's a section about the boards. They have a little bit more about the mayor is in charge of these, the appointment committees, kind of a map of what, what's happening. I think also for a lot of people, again, they, if there's an issue they want to talk about and they come to a specific thing on our agenda or there's a concern, I've observed that, you know, the, the agenda might be one thing, but people's concerns are adjacent to that and they're important, but they're not really like right on that issue. And this is another one, is how we collect that information and make sure it comes back to city staff. So when citizens take the time, it's, it's recorded for your sake and so that it doesn't get lost. Because again, people might, they don't realize which thing to come to and they shouldn't be punished for having shown up. We should somehow filter that information. And I guess that reminds me of, with public hearings, since that's a huge responsibility of this, this commission, is, and I may be wrong on this, but this is my observation. I think that sometimes we hear a lot of input on certain issues that then we give an, we give our vote and our recommendation to the city commission, but when it goes to city commission, what's transferred is the final vote, but not so much of an essence of the discussion. And I just wonder if there's a little bit more of that conveyance that needs to be passed along, especially when it's a very contentious issue for the sake of the city commission, because again, people don't have time to watch all these meetings. During the pandemic, I watched a lot more of them than I would normally, you know, attend. But it's hard to keep up with the long meetings, so I just wonder if sometimes conveying a little bit more of the comments might be helpful.
Just on that note, I always thought, since we have to hear Ms. Barkman, that I thought would be kind of cool. You know when you sit on an airplane and you gotta go through that welcome video for one or two minutes? I always thought it would be a great idea. Like I always, Judy and I talked about this at city commission meetings. Instead of me talking about increasingly about behavioral issues and what it means to be respectful in a place of business, then Mr. Casada often says, and I love it, and I, I want to use it, but I feel like I'm plagiarizing, you know, it's less like a football game and more like a courtroom. You know, if there is a video that we play or something, like we have these videos for our boards that we, that we play for a minute at, at the beginning or before we start the meeting, so people can understand the nature of what we do on planning, like the main art there, like you guys are doing, it's like, well, that's not what's, what's in front of us. You know what I mean? We're having to make a binary decision on, you know, things we can consider. But if there was something that teed it up and kind of tempered the crowd and, you know, evoked citizen engagement in a productive way because they understand the purpose of what we're doing, that might be helpful too.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Other input for Ms. Barkman?
Okay, I don't see any other input. As I always like to tell the boards when I'm meeting with them, I won't answer the phone at midnight, but if you get an idea at midnight, you're welcome to leave me a voicemail. You can also call or schedule some time with me. I'm always happy to chat as to how we can improve our boards. So our next steps in this process, we're wrapping up the board's review this month and the commission will do a workshop in March on this topic. And then after that is when you'll kind of start to see some changes and some things moving through. For your board, we're looking at that orientation piece and what makes sense with all of the boards, but kind of, and how to divide up what is helpful to all boards versus what is helpful to your board and maybe kind of blending in some of the other plans and strategic plans and aging in place and the S cap as well and, and things like that. So those are definitely things that we will be presenting and, and work on. So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
All right, next order of business is the annual election of officers.
Remember where the procedures?
No.
You open a floor for nominations for chair.
Okay.
And then you do it for vice chair and then depending on what you get, you close those and then vote on the nomination.
Yeah, you didn't give me a staff report on that, just so you know. Okay, so I will open the floor for nominations for chair at this time. Commissioner Douglas?
I nominate Gary Casada.
Thank you.
Second.
Do we have the second or?
Second.
The second?
Second.
Okay, very good. Any other nominations? Did you have your hand up? Other nominations? All right, are we ready for a vote? All right.
Close them. Close the nomination.
We're closing the nomination, thank you.
Yep.
All right, call for the vote. All in favor of myself being reelected? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much. I'll now open the floor for nominations to vice chair.
Who wants it?
Can I, can I make a nomination?
Rather the person volunteer, because I want to nominate Woody, but I don't want to do it.
I want to nominate Woody too, but I don't know if I can nominate.
I'll nominate Woody.
Does Woody want it? I mean, I can't say that I don't.
I second then. If he says, if he says he does not, does not deny, then I'll say second.
He doesn't deny it. Okay, so do we have a nomination and, and second?
Yeah.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of Woody Gantina as vice chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Hearing done. Congratulations, Woody. I'm gonna take next month off.
I was just gonna say, you better show up every month now.
Okay, next order of business, non-action items. Mr. Twing, there's three of them here.
Those are all for your information. There's no action necessary. They're just factual things that have occurred as far as the annual report. That's also true as item B, the administrative site plan approvals. They're simply factual items that have occurred and then the MAP and training sessions are there for your information. And if you are interested, please let staff know and we will schedule you for the training session you're interested in.
All right, and I'm gonna follow that up because I mentioned this in, in the other discussion, but the Michigan Housing Association, Housing in Four Planning, Housing in Four Parts series is available for anybody to watch. And it's very, in my opinion, it's very informative, very interesting, very dense. I almost feel you have to watch it twice, but it's eight hours long. So you, but it's very informative. I would encourage anybody, as we go into, as we go into the master planning period, I think it's, it's very helpful. Ms. Beiki.
I'm just gonna mention that I planned to go to the Transportation Bonanza and then I, which maybe, I, I mentioned it, I think via email, but I'll send it directly to you. And then I also just registered myself separately for Cities for People, which is a five-part series by Gil Penalosa, the former Parks Director of Bogota, Columbia, and he's candidate for mayor of Toronto for a second time because the current, the mayor that got elected got, resigned. And that's kind of an interesting program. It's gonna be with 20 people and with him and focusing on all, cities for all ages, basically. You know, how, how to make a city safe and livable for eight-year-olds and 80-year-olds. So that's kind of the theme of that. I'll report back on that.
All right, other comments?
Bless you.
Okay, if we're ready to, to move on, I will, I, we had a chance to talk to Ms. Barkman, but I will nonetheless ask if the, any of the commissioners have anything they want to put on the record, statements or other questions they want to put on the record tonight. Okay, seeing none, I will seek a motion to adjourn. All right, and I'm gonna call that a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.